The only thing in your way now is conditioned thinking. What are you still afraid of? What does your inner child still need to heal in order for you to make the moves necessary now? We're gonna find out on this episode of Sit With Me. Today, we're gonna talk about freeing ourselves from fears that stem from conditioned thinking. Fears that our inner child still carries. It's time to face these fears. I'm Amina Hextall-Suma. I am the Light Workers' Light Worker, your intuitive guide, the creator of Soul Transforming Energy and Movement, and welcome to my channel, Soul Transforming Energy. This session today is going to help you to free up where you might have blocked your manifestations with shame, guilt, or fear, just straight up fear. It's time to free yourself from life PTSD by being still and facing the root of your worries, your guilt, your shame, or your fears. One of the number one ways that I do this is by using free movement to release restricting energy so that the healing can begin. So what we're gonna do is I'm gonna guide you through a visualization as you are free to move either as I'm moving on the screen, you can follow me, or you can choose to move as spirit guides you to move while listening to the visualization and stating the affirmations where prompted. Enjoy this part of the session that I call Free To Be. Take a deep breath in through your mouth and exhale out. Relaxing your face muscles and breathe out. Filling up your lungs with clean and fresh air. And breathe out, releasing any food that no longer serves a purpose within your energy. Finding a rhythm and sync with the flow and the heartbeat. Deep breathing. As you breathe and as you move, visualize where you want to be as you are freeing your energy. You can move as I walk through this beautiful forest. It could be the beach for those who love connecting to the ocean, to the sounds of the waves. It could be a mountain top for those who love to connect to the inner realm. Enlightenment. Visualize where you are free to be. And you need to be in the energy of this place because as we move to the energy of the sacred space within, you shift the energy within you into a light with the sacred space's energy, with its peace. With its love, with its compassion, with its... Dancing. The earth is so... Let your mind not be focused on techniques. But focused on feeling. To release any shame, any guilt, any worries, any stress. Just dance and breathe. At this time, take four deep breaths in through your mouth and out through your mouth before returning to the rest of the session. Hey guys, welcome to the pick-up pile portion of this steam intuitive therapy session with me, Amina Hextall-Suma, the Light Workers' Light Worker. You have five piles to choose from today, and initially it was supposed to have been four, but it became five because I always made this little deal with myself that when I collected a certain amount of fortune cookies, I would do a fortune cookie reading. And by the time I was ready to do this session, I had five fortune cookies. So instead of just doing four and then I'm having one fortune cookie just sitting on the sidelines waiting for me to collect cookies again, I said, maybe they're meant to have five piles instead of four. So, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get some things while I'm talking to you guys. So, I added a fifth pile. Now, before we go and jump into this, let's of course clear the energy with some breathing and a little bit of... But yeah, let's just breathe. Let's take some grounding breaths in and out. I know you've been visualizing, I know you've been moving, but we're at a different point in this session today, and also some of you may have left and came back, and so we have to re-ground our energy. So what I want you to do, take a deep breath in through your mouth and out through your mouth. Breathe in, connecting your energy to the energy of the earth, and breathe out, letting go of anything that could be stressing you out, making you feel stuck, restricted. I'm sorry, my sunflowers up here are giving me some trouble. They're going into my water fountain. So, I don't know what that means. It's been raining here like every freaking day, and I'm happy for it. I don't know, I prayed for the rain because it keeps everybody calm, it keeps... Okay, I'm a Scrooge lately. I have not really been enjoying the sound of kids screaming and yelling in front of my house. So, I've been wishing for it to rain because I've just been really distracted from the things I need to do. And God has been actually listening, and it's been rain, rain, raining. Beautiful rain. And it's not that I don't like kids, it's just that these kids over here that keep hanging out in front of my house are hanging out over here because they're up to no good, and they don't want their parents to see them. I caught them yesterday by the side of someone's house looking like they were trying to get a little boy to make out or do something, and these are little, little kids, like they're no older than 10. And yeah, I had to step out on my porch, like I see y'all, what are y'all doing to this boy? Putting him up against somebody's house? Tear mine, but yeah. I wished for a rain, got my wish, and here we are. So, we're gonna take some grounding breaths of gratitude. Sure have a little bit of a distraction that's out here now, one of my kids, but let's still ground. Hopefully, her cellphone music isn't going to distract you guys. Take a deep breath in through your mouth, connecting to the energy of the earth. Filling up with her light, her love, her abundance, and exhale. Letting go of anything that feels heavy, that feels stifling, that feels restraining. Take another deep breath in. Glowing from the inside out, and exhale. Releasing any stress, any worries. Let them go, take another deep breath in. Feeling that loving embrace of your ancestral guides, your guardian angels, and the divine source itself, and exhale. Letting go of anything that no longer deserves to be in your energy. Last time, take a deep breath in. Relaxing your face muscles, relaxing your body, exhale. And just feel yourself relaxed from the head all the way down to your toes. Okay. Okay, so let me introduce you to your piles. Now, I haven't looked at the top cards. Each pile has its own fortune cookie, which is not revealed until you're reading, but you are selecting your pile based off of the top card. I have not even looked at them yet. So, I'm like excited to see what they're going to be. Yeah. So we're gonna see together. I kinda also encourage you, if you would like to have a more spiritually guided reading, instead of looking to see what the top card is that you're drawn to, just look and see what pile, which number, one, two, three, four, or five. And then maybe you can make your second choice be the pile that you're drawn to the top card. Alright, so I'm gonna give you a moment to do that. If you want to, it's your choice, if not, you can skip directly to pile selection where all of the cards are being revealed. Okay? Okay. So now, if you wanna choose by the top card, I'll show them to you. Pile number one, you have confidence. For pile number two, clarity. For pile number three, expectation. For pile number four, energy. And pile five, healing. So take a good look at all of the piles. If you need to pause right now in order to really focus, do so now, but I will be right back with pile one. Hey, pile one, you were drawn to the card that says confidence. This is read last, and I chose the easel that's crooked. Hold on. My poor guinea pigs, pile ones, y'all always know. Y'all the experimentation pile. Okay, this easel, and I never really put them in this corner. Let me put it where I usually do it, stop trying to be special. Alright. So my pile one, you were drawn to the card of confidence. Let's look at your fortune cookie. Perfect fortune cookie, this is like the perfect generic, it almost looks fake fortune cookie. Okay. I feel like things are unfolding for you perfectly, even if you don't see it yet, my pile ones. Things are unfolding as they should for you, and maybe you're beginning to see it. Are you serious? This is like an episode of Last Dragon. Now, this has happened to me one time before, many years ago. I opened a fortune that had no fortune. And I'm gonna take the same message that I got from when I saw the movie The Last Dragon, and the main character Bruce Lee, where he did the same thing. And his teacher told him, "You just opened a fortune without any fortune in it." This is because the answer is within you. You have the answer, you don't need any guidance right now. You hold the answers. And so what I'm getting for you guys is like, be confident that you know what you know. Be confident in your abilities and the things coming in for you, the things that are meant for you. Confidence is the key, I'm hearing, that you know what you know because you just opened a fortune that had no advice for you. So it's kinda like what I said, things seem to be unfolding perfectly. There's really nothing they can say in regards to that because things are unfolding as they should. Well, let's move on, my ones, that was an interesting start to your read. What blessings are your fears causing to slow down from manifesting? We have the seven of wands. And what blessings are the fears of my pile ones causing to slow down from manifesting? Eight of wands. The nine of cups, wow. And the ace of cups. Honey, my pile ones, your fears are keeping you from the love of a lifetime, from just being happy completely. Your fears are keep making you set very high boundaries and feel like you're constantly and having to stand up for yourself, defend yourself, fight for what you want, against, go against what others are telling you to do, and stand your ground. But they're saying you can let your guard down a little bit, that there's something that wants to come in, it looks like some kind of messages that wanna reach you. Whatever these messages hold, it's a part of your wish fulfillment. It's something you, when you hear it, or when this message reaches you, it's gonna feel like your wishes came true. It's gonna bring in a new start at love. This could be a love relationship, or it could even be a job or career or a move. For many of you, it could be a trip or vacation somewhere, I'm hearing, just gifted to you. It's gonna feel like this was gifted to you, like you don't expect these, this to come in at this time. But yeah, it's like something you're wishing for coming in, something you've struggled and stood your ground for, saying, "This is what I want, this is what I need, it's coming." But now they're saying, just let your guard down a bit because it puts you in an energy of being afraid or in fear if you don't. And your fears are why we're having this session today, to make sure that your fears are not going to keep you stuck or stagnant. So let's see, what could be causing these fears now? Why do you still feel like you have to defend or stand your ground for what you wish for? We have the queen of pentacles. Make sure I've got space for everything. The moon reversed. Knight of pentacles reversed. And the ten of wands reversed. Okay, what could be causing these fears now? There's like suppressed emotions you may be carrying from feeling like you put energy or a lot of work towards something, got no support, got no help, and saw nothing grow from your efforts. There's a desire to be in this energy of the queen of pentacles, to feel comfortable financially, but there may be somebody around you who already projects this energy. Maybe it's someone you worked for, for many of you, you worked for someone, you feel like you got them into this position of being wealthy and rich, and many of you, your fear is that you're gonna work for others for the rest of your life, making someone else prosperous while you carry all the work. Others of you, there's a fear of not reaching this level of comfort and financial stability. And the fears are rooted in having put work and time and love and care towards something that you felt like either prospered for someone else, and you didn't get anything back, or you just never saw the fruits of your labor for. And so you have to release this fear and get more into this mindset of abundance is mine by birthright, and then you'll start to see less of a struggle and more flow because you give me the energy of you have tried many different things in order to increase abundance, but something wants to come in now, and you just have to release that fear that it's always gonna be a lot of hard work, or you're always going to be working really hard to elevate someone else. Okay? It's a mindset shift, and it's mostly gonna be a mindset shift for everyone, you know, when it comes to finances, some kind of mindset shift. So let's see, what could possibly be the root of those fears? Even though I feel like we kinda got to the root, but this is gonna get to the root of your emotions, maybe what you're feeling, because it says here at the moon reverse, I'm getting emotions have been suppressed around this feeling of work with no reciprocation. So we have autumn. Hmm, that's interesting. With the Libra, Scorpio, and Sagittarius energy. Full moon energy, the queen within six to nine months, wow. So, remember I said things are unfolding perfectly? Depending on when you're watching this, I'm using my summer holiday cards because this is the summer when I'm filming this, but it's letting me know that by the autumn, you are going to get this shift. It's like whatever work you're doing now, you're shifting out of, or maybe this reading causes the shift, but you shift out of the fears that are holding you back. And in doing so, you allow justice to come in, you allow transformation to take place, and you open up to new experiences, culture expansion, travel, focusing more on your higher purpose. By the next full moon, which is in September, which is heading into autumn, or within six to nine months from when you're seeing this, you're going to be experiencing this big shift, this wish fulfillment coming in. But I'm not really feeling it, what I'm feeling is by the next full moon, you're going to be in this energy. This, whatever's trying to reach you is going to reach you, and it'll only take six to nine months for the changes in your life to take place. That is deep and interesting. We have microphone, news, trending, broadcast, expression, strong opinion, make known, current events, public speaking, speak truth, communicate, social media, being heard, speaking up. So maybe there is a fear of being heard, maybe things you've said have been judged in the past, maybe you're afraid of not being understood. Some of you are looking for a social media presence, but maybe that hasn't been working out for you, and you're feeling like you put a lot of energy into that, but it's not moving. Maybe by autumn, you'll see a change, it's a sign of Sagittarius twice, which lets me know at this time, you're really starting to be focused on expanding your horizons, traveling, learning new cultures, all of this is like initiating you into your purpose. You also have childhood with the sign of the Zodiac sign of Pisces. Innocence, playful, growing friendship, lightness of being, foundations, need of others, revisit the past, loving life, no worries, inexperienced growth, new beginnings. So, instead of telling you what could be at the root of your fears, it's kinda letting you know that things are shifting. But I do see, maybe in your childhood, you weren't really, you didn't feel heard. Maybe you had adults around you who felt children should be seen more so than heard, and maybe your voice has been stifled in that way that makes you a little unconfident when it comes to speaking your truth or standing in your light of the things you have to say. There is a need to revisit the past when it comes to publicly speaking and speaking your truth and communicating and being heard because there's a shift that wants to come in. There's some healing that's needed there, some forgiveness, maybe of someone, could be a mother figure with the queen here that made you feel like your voice or what you had to say was not important. That's where you need to do your healing. Somewhere in your childhood where what you had to say, your voice wasn't being accounted for. Okay. So lastly, let's get a message from your inner child and your... okay so lastly let's get a message from your inner child and your future self so I'm gonna let you know now your future self is telling you confidence confidence is your way forward rise up and stand tall be bold feel the fire in your soul it's time for you to not be afraid anymore to stand up rise up and and step into your purpose fearlessly I feel like this is a big thing with your higher purpose for this group that is trying to come in it's like something you worked for something you really wished for and it's coming in but you just have to be confident and you have to trust in your guidance and you have to do the root healing work why are you doing so much and suppressing how you feel about taking on so much and not getting anything back well the roots is in feeling like what you have to say isn't gonna be heard in important anyway and therefore you just do and do and do and suppress okay let's see what else could use some healing and attention so you wanna get back into a state of awe where things are fresh and new and bring wonder perhaps things have started to get really boring and monotonous now in your life let some light in and with confidence comes a need to trust your inner child needs to know that it can trust that it's being guided in the right directions this is when your conditioned voice rises up because it's going to yell at you based off of past experiences and you have to be the one your higher self has to speak to that inner child and let it know it's safe this time you know it's been safe you know you had learning experiences you had to go through you learned and now you can trust to move forward in awe open to new things cuz I feel for this group there's a lot of newness new beginnings coming in and you have soul retrieval it's almost like there's a part of yourself that you lost that's coming back feels like something that stems from your childhood could stem from a mother or a mother figure and it's like you're getting aspects of yourself that you suppress that you cut off back that's what is coming in for you at this time to assist you in facing your fears and healing your inner child and my power ones this is your reading I hope that this gave you some clarity some guidance if it did give me a thumbs up if this entire session today was amazing if you're new to the light workers circle here um remember to subscribe we're always welcoming in new light workers to this uh light tribe read my description so you can find out about all the times and days and ways we can continue to vibe as well as visit my website summacenter.com that's also in the description to find out how you can join us this year on bonessa journey to Guinea West Africa and into the new year I'm sending y'all so much light and love on this journey here peace blessings and all the goodies that come from being a part of this family of light and until next time I send you so much love so much love I'll be back with power two bye hey power two welcome to your session I'm sorry my little agitated starting your session cuz one of my kids is out here and she's bothering me a lot oh sorry she just came and bothered me again so I don't know if you guys this pal here is are like constantly being distracted by either your children or by other people or oh just coming to your power has been very difficult like feeling like I have to do other things for other people before I could do what I wanted to do very annoying this broke off just now so I don't know if this is a symbol for some of you guys but um when you're feeling down maybe look at a picture of a sunflower or grow some sunflowers or put some in the house or something but there's something with you guys and sunflowers that may be powerful in healing heart healing and stuff like that so I'm gonna take a deep breath cuz she did irk me um oh sorry I'm hitting my mic and everything let's take a deep breath in together or you can just watch me cuz I need it and now alright okay sorry y'all now my daughter just went in the room ah I didn't want her to feel like I didn't want her around but she's just making too much noise and if you're new here you don't know I'm I have three children well I have four kids but one is an adult three of my youngest are um autistic and nonverbal so it could get a little frustrating when communication isn't getting through to them and it's interesting you were drawn to the card clarity and that's what I was just feeling right now like I'm not you know I don't know if it's clear what I'm saying but for you I feel like you need some kinda clarity your card says banish the fog of illusion open your eyes to the truth remember the perfection of who you are so it feels like you're not clear on who you are that maybe you've been listening to the stories that you've been conditioned to believe about yourself and now it's time for you to see the truth of who you are let's take a look at your fortune cookie too and I really I just realized I read that first this was supposed to be read as a message from your future self but maybe you needed to know that right now that that is what your future self wants you to know ASAP it's not true the things that you've been told about yourself or the experiences you've gone through that have led you to believe maybe negative things about yourself and you probably don't even realize you probably say negative things like I don't know how to communicate clearly or bear with me I'm not too smart about these things or you know me I'm always pretty messy you know these are things that either you've been conditioned to believe about yourself based off of what others have said or you've conditioned yourself to believe about yourself based off of um past experiences and these things are not true it's time for you to get clear today so let's see what your fortune says it's anxious it's like cracking open as I opened it alright you guys keep it together it feels like you feel like you're on the edge this group gives me a I'm on the edge of like completely breaking up or having a breakthrough but y'all don't realize that's one of the same thing breaking up breaking open and having a breakthrough go hand in hand alright so your fortune says your resilience will shine in the face of surprises wow so do you feel like you're very resilient I feel like there have been a lot of situations that may have arisen or risen that surprised you and showed you just how resilient you are and I think that's one of the things you need to know that's a truth about yourself that you're resilient that you um what's the word I wanna use not pop back but like you recoup and you revive yourself from um experiences that many others might have been like beat down and done for in and it's like you have been able to still shine being resilient doesn't mean you push through and you look like what you've been through no resilience means you are shining still as you get through the things you're pushing through so know that about yourself you're very strong and I feel like maybe this pa- power has been um made to focus a lot on your shortcomings and weaknesses instead of where you have strengths so let's see what blessings your fears are causing to slow down from manifesting at this time if the hair font the fool the devil yeah you really have a lot of fears holding you back from something and the king of wands so your fears are keeping you from taking a leap of faith that will bring you like a huge spiritual boost for some of you you will just feel like you spiritually grown you've made peace I feel like a retreat maybe going on a retreat hosting a retreat teaching on a retreat being a part of a workshop um for some of you literally doing yoga or teaching yoga there's something with you being some kinda teacher or spiritual leader of some kind even if you're like I don't do that as my nine to five my career maybe it's within your home or your community that you're meant to have this position or on social media but it's necessary for you to just trust and take a leap of faith and they're showing that there's a lot of fears that you're stuck in that are you're holding and it almost feels like some of these fears come from a masculine so it could have been a brother figure a father figure a husband figure someone that made you feel like you would never be able to reach a certain level um and then kinda hold you in that fear state when really you are meant to be ambitious and go after the things you're passionate about but it's like this masculine energy kind of affected you and slowed you down from trusting your guidance where it's necessary to take leaps of faith this pile is giving me you are very calculated about the moves you make and spirit is saying your fears are holding you in that position whereas there's a need for you to sometimes just trust and leap okay so let's see what could be causing these fears now at this time why are these fears arising for my power twos with the king of wands again this is like confirmation this a masculine figure in your life maybe you feel like you cleared yourself with their energy but spirit is saying nope there are still aspects or influence of this person still affecting you now we have the ace of cups reverse for many of you this could be a ex-husband an ex-boyfriend just someone you don't mess with anymore even if it is a family member it's like a love that was fulfilling at one point that's empty now this but this person it's like they they I don't know if you're going through legal issues with them or they just like to pull down your energy when you seem like you're out there getting and going after the things you desire five of swords yeah this is someone who you constantly feel like there's a battle with you feel like you won you're good but you don't know when it's gonna be another battle with them the ten of pentacles wow so I do feel you are destined for some kinda generational wealth to come in but that could also be a fear of yours that maybe a relationship not working out uh maybe an inheritance not being in your name or something dealing with this masculine it's like this masculine is causing you to have certain fears that you won't have prosperity that you won't find for many of you feel like you won't find the one to be with for the long haul power two what is going on literally as I'm doing your reading I get a banging at my door and it's pest control pest control so on top of the interruptions from my child now a man comes to my door to my pest control so um I don't know if you're going through a battle with a masculine about your kids or your kid um for some of you this may be for a specific person um yeah don't worry about it pest control is here so if this person's bothering you pestering you making you feel like you're never gonna be happy um don't listen to them find ways to block them okay I just feel like there's a someone that's been bothering you and maybe you've been doing things and taking steps to like not be bothered but I know it still has its effect don't let them discourage you don't let them make you constantly feel like you're always gonna have a battle you will not abundance and prosperity is your birthright okay that's something you need to always remember as your truth and don't let this person this devilish energy change that view of yourself okay and your abilities for many of you this is a father figure ex-husband father of your kids boyfriend ex-boyfriend uncle brother grandfather somebody okay so they could be causing the fears to arise in you now that make you less likely to take leaps because you're worried about your money and being fulfilled um but where could these fears be rooted in because they couldn't stir these fears in you unless they had roots already so let's see if there's any emotional roots or any other messages we have scuba diver there is a need for you to go within they're saying going within observation zero point self-examination exploring the unconscious mind desire to know self-reflection disconnecting so you may be disconnecting from someone at this time or you have disconnected from someone who ain't very happy about it there's still a need to do cord cutting there's still a need to do some releasing and there is a need to do some forgiving so I do feel the root of your fears one aspect is deep 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 within that there has been something and I don't feel like it's just from this relationship so let me just see what else we got ostrich trap wow avoidance closed mindedness refusing to face reality feeling threatened fear-based thinking run for cover just a conspiracy theory so it's again going back to this clarity like listening and believing illusions things that are not true having your mind closed to things balancing out for you or working out for you um constantly feeling like your peace is being threatened and perhaps this is something that you've done for a long time it feels like you've often suppressed things that you were thinking you've often like suppressed where certain aspects of reality might even have been too painful for you to acknowledge and you have spring this is another every pile got a well this is only the second pile but first pile got a season as well Aries Gemini and Taurus energy so and then I I would tell you I I have to say okay so I do see a shift either within the next one to three months you're gonna feel a shift in how you view yourself and your ability to um calling the love of your life and live prosperously happily ever after because that's what I feel like is needed here we have the sign we have the maiden here new moon energy so I do feel like by next spring from when you're watching this you're gonna be in a whole new place financially or romantically um for some of you this energy shift begins the next new moon now there is a new moon I'll be live on the twenty third of August doing the reading for the new moon in Virgo um so maybe that's when you're gonna experience the shift that you are waiting on that could help you um heal completely these wounds from I feel like you've come from a life of avoiding certain issues not facing certain realities and now um a lot of these things are rooted in your unconscious mind and it's time for you to explore and see where and why and begin to uproot them so that you can trust your yourself to be guided in the right direction when you wanna take a leap of faith alright y'all y'all can't tell how many pauses I'm taking right now but this one child of mine she's one of a set of twins is really pushing my buttons you may hear her in the background I just feel like for this power you are there are gonna be things trying to distract you and a lot of what you go through on your journey is a distraction like things trying to distract you from what your goal is your ultimate goal and um you gotta stay focused sometimes I do feel you felt you had to bury your head in the sand like so that you could stay focused stay in alignment not um fall out of alignment with who you truly are but in doing that In doing that, sometimes. You do forget who you are, because you're not facing your experiences head on, so that you can learn more about yourself and grow. So I do feel maybe avoidance and not really. Self-reflecting enough has been a problem, that's the root, and now it's time for you to do that. Alright, so lastly, let's get a message from your inner child, I already gave you the message from your future self, but we can always reiterate. So you have trauma, there's some things you experienced in your childhood that were traumatic. I feel like for this pile, you may have suppressed a lot of that with spiritual work. And maybe trying to shift perspective. But at this time, when it comes to working in the shadow and healing the inner child, you have to look at experiences for what they are. Some of you have had some traumatic experiences, I'm hearing even some of you might have dealt with, um, molestation, I'm sorry if you have. Um, I'm hearing discrimination for some of you, prejudice-ness, racism. Um, domestic violence, verbal abuse, uh, abandonment from, uh, parents and things like that. These are things that your inner child is saying, um, they're working on healing at this time. And it's necessary for you to face the things that are traumatic to you and take deep dives to really examine how they've affected you. In order to heal them. You also have surrender, this is a very up pile that likes to control the outcome of things, control the direction you're going in. And you're being asked at this time to be like the fool and just trust and surrender and allow yourself to be guided. And limiting belief. I do feel that a lot of your experiences have caused you to have limiting beliefs about your abilities and how far you can go. The things you can accomplish and, um. You need to shift that. That's pretty much the main thing, is your experiences have caused you to limit. How far you could get, the things that you can have and attain, and if you just surrender control. And stop trying to avoid facing where you might have had traumas, and these all have to be childhoods, some of these traumas could stem from, um. Now, ex-husband, ex-boyfriend, you know, family member. It's just time for you to look at where these experiences have limited your belief. In the things that you could accom- can accomplish and will. Your future self, again, is telling you to be clear on who you are and stop allowing the fog of illusion. To. Make you see yourself in another way, get your head out of the sand can. Take a look deep within at these traumas. And free these beliefs that are not true, but are kind of keeping you from actually moving. Forward into the ne- onto your next cycle. Alright, your resilience will shine in the face of surprises, and I do feel this pile, you're very resilient. And, um. Yeah. I feel like there's new beginnings coming in, you just really need this moment to pause. And face things that you haven't been facing, that you've been suppressing within, um. Particularly dealing with a masculine in your life. And that's what I got for you, my pile twos, I hope this resonated, I hope this entire session resonated with you and was helpful. If it was, give me a thumbs up, if you're new here, remember to subscribe, welcome to this light tribe. And, uh, everybody read the description, tells you about what I got coming up, how you can vibe with me. And also join me on Bolasa's journey to get me into the new year. I'm sending you so much light and love on this journey. Peace, blessings, and all the goodies that come from being a part of this family of light. And I'll be back with pile three, but until next time, love you guys, bye. Hey, pile three, welcome to your session, you were drawn to the number three or the card expectation. And this is red last. Let's check out your fortune cookie. Okay, it's already broken open, so. Perhaps you may be already experiencing whatever is in here. At, okay, I'm also being shown with it cracked open, I stole the lucky numbers, so I need to mention them, your lucky numbers. I would say for the next three days, three weeks. I'm seeing threes and fours, so probably three to four days and weeks, you did number three, twenty-two, thirty-six, forty, forty-three. And forty-four, interesting to have the number three, and this is indeed pile three. So that must be a sign that three is a lucky number of yours. And your fortune says you will soon bring joy to someone new in your life. Wow. So I don't know if you have a new loved one coming in, like a new relationship, uh, childbirth. Um. Yeah, maybe it's something you've been expecting. Or wishing for. Let's see what's going on with you, my threes, what blessings are your fears causing to slow down from manifesting? We have the Emperor, the blessings are the fears of my pile three. Slowing down from manifesting, the lovers. I just said that. Five of Cups. And the Eight of Swords. Well, my pile threes, y'all are like my bosses, my entrepreneurs, my. My Gs, my OGs, my, you guys. Are meant to be in your soul connection at this time, either in a romantic soul connection. Or the job of your dreams or both. I just feel like your fears are that you will succeed at these things. Maybe you've had a lot of disappointments around love, a lot of disappointments around career. Just feeling stuck and trapped in constant disappointing cycles and, um. This feeling is keeping your soulmate or your divine connection away. So I feel like many of you here are meant to already be either in your divine purpose. Serving your divine purpose in the world, or you're meant to be in your divine love relationship. And if either of these are not there for you yet, then this is definitely your pile. If you feel like, ah, I have the job of my dreams and I'm in the love relationship of my dreams, then you're in the wrong pile. Okay? So what could be causing you to have these fears now that you're. Constantly going to. Have disappointment when it comes to the things you truly love and desire, like stuck in a cycle of disappointment. With the Seven of Wands, well, possibly feeling like you're having to defend what you want currently. Maybe there is a job, a career or a relationship that you feel is your calling, that there are people who don't agree. People who are causing you to overthink, I'm feeling too, like to wonder if you, to constantly feel like, am I making the right choice? The Two of Pentacles. It's like fearing that you won't be able to juggle to maintain these things is happening right now. With the Nine of Swords, ooh, my pile threes, you're really stressing and worried at this time. And the Nine of Pentacles, for what, you have like. Comfort and stability coming in. Alright, so what could be causing these fears right now is a fear that you, um. That you're just never going to be financially stable, and that seems to be the consensus so far for a lot of the piles. Um, that there's a fear of being financially comfortable and stable. But what I get with you is that there's a fear that you'll lose it. There's a constant worry that you cannot juggle both a happy relationship and a career at the same time, or just. You feel like whenever you have everything balanced and under control. You just feel like things come up against it and knock it down. Um, you always have sh- to be stressed and worried that you won't maintain it. And there's something now could be, uh, some financial issues at this time that are causing you to fall into this state of fear. Alright, so what could possibly be the root, what could be at the core, what could be the emotions at the root of these fears? Sapphire, we have the Zodiac sign of Gemini, so. Maybe feeling like you don't know what you're talking about, you've had that happen to you before, where you've been made to feel like. You don't know enough, it says mental force, spiritual insight, hope and faith, wise judgment, power and strength, kindness, life of the party. Extroverted, motivate, precious, holy divine favor and revered. Perhaps you will often look to be this symbol of hope and faith, maybe you were always seen as the life of the party, always being strong. And making it through everything without showing signs of stress, you know, or wear and tear. Maybe you've always been seen as someone to motivate others. And maybe there's a fear that you'll be seen as inadequate, unable to maintain. The lifestyle that. You mo- motivate others to do, to get into, maybe there's a fear that there are people who. Look to you as being a symbol of. A great entrepreneur or a great parent or a great lover, maid or whatever, and that you'll fall short of that. Um. We have corset, held together, boundaries, restriction, this is the sign of Aquarius, which has to do with friends and wealth in your soul tribe. And I, I do feel that maybe you've been judged or you, you fear judgment. From friends and people around you. There's like almost a feeling that you're supposed to be a certain way, and maybe this stems from childhood. Where there's certain rules and structures and, uh, you have to have the perfect posture and look as if you're holding it together and support. Others in your family by people pleasing, and, um. That's where this is rooted in, if you ever felt like you were a people pleaser, where you felt like you were always trying to bring in other people's blessings and happiness. Uh, at the same time maintaining this image that you were expected to maintain. That's where these fears are rooted in, that you cannot maintain this image, that it's almost what I'm here for you is you need to watch The Wiz. Or The Wizard of Oz, and it has a, uh, really The Wiz, um, because it's given me the energy of having to pretend to be. This magical person, because this is how people saw you, not because you said you were, and, um. Trying to maintain and uphold this image. Is becoming difficult. You can only hold it for but so long. And lastly, you have checkered flag with the Zodiac sign of Leo. Conclusion, outcome, final completion, verdict, settled results, signaling, signaling the end, finishing first, achievement, culmination. Final chapter, endings and feeling relieved. So there is what I'm getting at the root as well, is that with this Five of Cups and this Eight of Swords energy. There's a root. Here that there will ne- never be a conclusion, that. You're never seeing a final outcome of things, that you're always feeling like you're stuck in this ongoing cycle of disappointment. And, um, you, you're waiting for this end, the signal that you finally finish going through. All of these life changes and transformations, but I do want you to know you are in the final chapter and it is time for you to start to feel. Relieved. Okay, because you're seeing now what's at the root of these fears and that is giving you the ability. To shift the energy, okay? So let's get you a message from your inner child and your future self. Now this card here is the message from your future self. Your future self is saying be open for whatever comes next. It might just be the music your heart's been waiting for, and then your fortune says you will soon bring joy to someone new in your life. So there's something you've been waiting for. That's coming in. Your future self is saying to be open to it, expect it, this is the one, one of those times where you need to have high expectations. So that you can manifest what it is you want to come in, if it's someone new. Then that's what's manifesting, but at this time, your future self is saying the best. Method of manifesting this is to be open to expecting what you want to come in. And let's see your inner child's message to you, we have soul, I do feel like you're getting deep soul. Healing at this time, and that's what's needed, this pile, I feel like, um. You've been like wounded to the core in a sense with. When you end up in what feels like a cycle that won't end, it can do something to. You at your core, because you start to shift into believing this cycle will never end, this is my life. And there's something your inner child is saying that perhaps at this time, maybe even through this session here, this entire session. Your soul has been getting some love, I wanna look inside the book for that card as well, it's calling to me, you also have destiny. There are things you had to go through, you have a very, uh. Strong guide that's leading you towards what's destined for you, so the experiences you're going through are because. They are putting you in alignment with your soul calling, with your destiny, and you have abandonment. So this could be an issue that has been ongoing for you, where there's constant disappointment. Where you always feel stuck, like you give your love to something or someone, and. At, in the end, you're left alone, you're abandoned. This could stem from childhood, this could stem from work, friendships, whatever it is. It's like your guides are coming through to let your inner child know you were never abandoned, that they were always here guiding you. And that every experience you went through was a part of leading you towards your destiny. Now the book opened to destiny, which says invitation, and the first line says you're on the right path always and no matter what. Which is something I teach, you just fall out of alignment with the vibration of the things you wanna call in along your journey. But this card is a reminder that you do not need anything or anyone to tell you how to live your life or which path to take. You're always connected to your soul's guidance and to your essence, nobody can hear your own inner voice better than you. And that's a reminder to just trust yourself and your guidance, now. I was trying to find soul. But your inner child is asking for you to do the things that you once felt called to, that you felt were a part of your destiny. To open up to doing those things, to calling those things in again, returning to your childlike mindset and dreams. That's what is needed at this time, alright. The soul card says to look into your inner child's eyes, connecting with the essence that has been with both of you always, the patient and wise observer of your journey. As you gaze into the vast infinite space within you, say out loud, my dear one, you and I are one. You cannot lose me just as I cannot lose you, love is what we are. And you're being asked to connect to the unchanging part of you that existed before you were born. What are some images that arise when you connect with the word soul? When in your life do you most strongly feel the presence of the infinite within you? Feel the presence of the greater soul to which your individual soul is connected, like a drop of water belonging to the ocean. Allow the greater soul to surround you and hold you, feel the connection between your soul and the cosmic soul. This card invites you to trust your ability to speak the language of the soul. You might receive its guidance through dreams, writing, dancing or painting. Each one of us has a distinctive way of allowing the realm of soul to speak to us. Make time in your life for your soul's expression to me be made visible, and I feel this is a part of your destiny. Where it was saying to return to the things that brought you joy and pleasure in your childhood, in your youth. That is a part of your soul's calling, and somewhere you felt abandoned by that calling. Or you abandoned that calling, or you felt like you just couldn't, yeah, like you abandoned the calling or the calling abandoned you. And your inner child has a need to return to it, so whatever you have let go of or you felt left you. That you always felt drawn to as a child, your soul is calling for you to return to it at this time. Okay? That's your reading, my pile threes. I hope this resonated for you guys, this entire healing session for connecting to your inner child, if it did, please give me a thumbs up. If you're new to my channel, please remember to subscribe, welcome, welcome, light worker. If you're new to my channel, please remember to subscribe. Welcome, welcome light worker. You're only drawn here if you are of the light. And um. Read the description, tells you about all the ways you can continue to vibe with me, connect with me, book a personal session and even join us. Um, all of us light workers on Bonnessa Journey to Guinea into the New Year. The retreat that I'll be hosting from December thirtieth twenty twenty-five to January twelfth twenty twenty-six in Guinea, West Africa. And I'm sending you so much light and love on your journey. Peace, blessings and all the goodies that come from being a part of this family of light. I'll be back with pile four, but until next time, my threes. Hey, pile four, welcome to your session. This was my spiritually guided choice. I was like, uh, I'm just gonna choose pile four. Before the card was flipped. The pile I actually chose was pile five, so this should be interesting um. So you were drawn to the card energy and this is a part of a message from your future self that I read last. Let's check out your fortune cookie. My pile fours, your fortune is cracked open. So it, when I see a cracked open fortune, it means it's, there are lucky numbers on here for you, but it also can mean that. You are in the midst of like this fortune is now, it's for now, okay, immediate. So your lucky numbers, my pal four are twenty-one, twenty-four, thirty-four. Thirty-six, forty-two and forty-eight. Interestingly, I am forty-eight years old. Okay. See a message says travel with an open heart and positive expectations. Wow, so if you've been thinking about traveling or you have traveling coming up, or you're thinking about going on Bonnessa, which you should be. They're saying do it with an open heart and positive expectations. So get those deposits in, make those payments, make those trip plans, whatever it is you wanna do. Um, I have a trip I wanna make before I even head to Africa. I'm thinking about going to my hometown, New York in October. And I was feeling really good about the trip, even though it means facing a community that I have not really been. Dealing with for a while. And um. Yeah, that's nice to see, positive expectations. So if any of you have been like worried or planning to travel but worried in some way, they're saying, no, do it. But stay in a positive energy. Maybe that's something your inner child needs. Maybe there's a fear. About traveling to a certain place or some, something, you know, that has something to do with an inner child fear. But let's see what blessings are your fears causing to slow down your manifestations. So powerful you have empress. Three of wands. So far I don't see any fears. Four of cups, okay, there we go. And the knight of swords. My powerful is there's something that wants to come in for you ASAP. I almost feel like you don't really have many fears that are causing your blessings from slowing down. Okay. There could be things you're doing. So with the empress here. I do feel that you are meant to be experiencing peace, calm, good health. Travel somewheres, like she looks like she's traveled somewhere, she's in a spa, whatever. You are supposed to be living a life of comfort, like an empress right now or emperor. But with less of the boss energy, more of the relaxing, self nurturing, loving, caring energy um. You've been waiting on something that wants to come in or that you've been wanting to do. There's a little hesitancy there to take a leap. Okay, so I am seeing there are some fears around. Doing something that could lead you to the lifestyle you desire, one of ease and relaxation. I feel like it could be repetition, feeling like you've done something or tried something constantly. You put your heart into something. And you're done, you're like, I don't want anymore of that. I've tried it and tried it and tried it. It's just giving me the same thing. And I'm bored with it. I'm tired of this, but something new is being offered to you. At this time, there's a new experience, something new that wants to come in. And yeah, it might feel like it's something else that touches at your emotions again and you have to put your heart into it, but. It's like this time it's different. It's not the same that you had before. So. This night of swords energy is giving me two different things. On one end, I feel like you're meant to speak. There are something powerful about the things you say to bring shifts in. People in places, but I also feel that there's a fear of someone else. Who constantly comes at you with things to say. This could be, it does give me a masculine energy, could be a son, a brother, uncle, father, ex-boyfriend, ex-husband. It's just the energy of someone who constantly. You feel like you're tired of dealing with. Maybe they come in and they start the same arguments. Or they come in and they say the same crap to you over and over and over again, and it's at the point now where you're not even. Wanting to deal with that energy at all and it starts to make you feel like. Almost like what pile two was feeling, like things are gonna constantly keep going until you say no more. But spirit is saying you're blocking out everything now because of this experience. You have this fear now. Of putting your heart towards anything completely and that's keeping you from. Jumping in the water and, and going after your passion. It's like. It's almost like you're looking at this lifestyle here, like it's right there, it's coming. But you're feeling like it's never coming and maybe you've constantly had that mindset where it's now you're like, uh-uh, not doing that no more. But it really wants to come in really quickly, really does. It's a mindset shift that's needed for everybody and yours is to get out of the mindset that. Things are gonna be the same again, if you try something that you've done before. You have to get out of the mindset that your ship is not coming in and that sometimes you have to go towards it. You can't just stand on the shore in fear. And for others of you who have a masculine with a sharp tongue in your life or that always has something to say um. Learning a different way and how to deal with that energy. Alright, so that's interesting. So the blessing that wants to come in is this life of ease, of peace. Of being able to travel freely, taking care of yourself and not having to be overwhelmed with responsibility. And, and also the things that you've been wishing for and working hard towards finally being available to you. Okay. So what could be causing these fears right now? We've the nine of cups. Interesting nine of cups. Cause right side up, it's like all her cups are pouring on her. Three of cups. Four of pentacles reversed. And the eight of cups. So what is causing these fears right now? There's a. There's a fear because here it's like you see yourself getting your wish fulfillment. You see yourself celebrating with friends, a new soul family. Just having everything, just feeling like an endless flow of abundance. But at the same time, it feels like there's a little sadness here. There's a fear that there are many that you're gonna have to walk away from and let go of that you once valued in order to get what you want. There's a fear that you have to lose friends that you've had for a long time to gain new ones. There's just some fear that with your blessings is gonna come loss is what I'm hearing for this pile. There's also a fear that you won't be able to maintain it, whatever it is that gives you your abundance. There's a fear that you're gonna have to hold on tight to it because either you're afraid that. Your money can change or you just won't be able to, to maintain the flow. This causes you to kinda stay in familiar environments that are no longer, you know. Adding to your prosperity or to your um heart center. So I do feel like maybe you're starting to see. Things changing for the better, but the fear is creeping up that you won't be able to maintain. A better, higher level of living and that there's a fear of having to release those and people in places that you truly love. Or still feel a connection to. Oh, so what could possibly be the root of these fears? Where do they stem from? Because yeah, these are coming up now for whatever reason, but there has to be a root. Wow, another, each pile has a season so far, I think except pile three. Everybody got a season. You have winter, this pile. And you have the Zodiac signs of Aquarius, Pisces and. What's that? Oh, Capricorn and Capricorn. Winding quarter moon, the crone within nine to twelve months. So I do feel for you guys. Whatever is at the root of your fears, by this winter, from whenever you're watching this, the next winter. You're going to notice a shift. I feel like you're becoming more wiser, you're tapping into past lifetime energy, whether you know it or not. You're tapping into ancient wisdom and um. In nine to twelve months from the winter, I feel like. I'm gonna, uh, they keep showing me December. From December, you count nine to twelve months and I see wish fulfillments coming in, a new soul tribe, wealth. Friends that, new friendships. I see a big healing, a lot of releasing of people and things that are no longer. Um, that are no longer positive in your life, so that you could focus on your ambitions. Your career is gonna take high resonance in your life. High president, sorry, in your life um. From the winter on, even if it could be, these ships could be happening now and by winter you really feel them, but. Nine to twelve months after that, that time period, that year, I feel like twenty twenty-six for this pile, you're going to. Be wealthy. I almost want to say be rich or wealthy, some kind of influx and prosperity is gonna come in. Alright, that's not what this was supposed to answer. What could possibly be the root of these fears? Um, maybe there's something that in the winter time you expect to manifest and there's a fear that it won't. And that's causing you to feel like you gotta hold on to what you get, be afraid to walk away from things you've already known. Um, yeah. We have Beehive diligent, persistent stamina, application, tireless, mindful, hard work, okay. Harvest endurance, patient concentration. So this pile is my busy bees. This really is my pile. I literally just bought and I'm gonna show y'all. I just bought some bee earrings. Can you even see them? Yeah, little bee earrings, just got some. Um, got my little bee here, so I'm gonna add the bee in this session here to remind you to take a break, okay? At the root of your fears is that. You don't prosper without doing. There's some issue with self-worth, value and money with that Taurus here. I think gain, how you gain prosperity. Is at the root of your fears. You feel like if you're in this energy, you're not gonna be prosperous. You feel like you have to constantly be working and pushing and going towards something in order to be prosperous. And uh, that is. Due to a fear of. Not doing and lack, which stems from lack. You feel like by not doing or pushing. You're not gonna manifest anything. You're putting a lot of energy and hard work towards something and spirit is saying like. Value, you need to raise your value for one and your worth and um. You have to be patient and give time for a harvest to come in. You can't constantly be planting, 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 okay? Hot air balloon. In the sign of Leo, balance, uplifting, freedom, going with the flow, rise above, don't resist, new perspective, untouchable, defying gravity. Continuous flow, ascension, elevate, feeling good. There's like a fear that when you're happy and you're feeling uplifted and you're enjoying yourself and that. Your, your balloon's gonna get burst, it's gonna burst and you're gonna just go sinking down again. So there's a root fear that when you are joyful. When you shift into, you shift your perspective, that when you're feeling good. Things are gonna fail or fall. How come you guys, okay, you did get three. How about say you only got two cards, but yeah, okay. So that's interesting. There is a need for you to really. Pull your energy back. Look, and you got the card energy. You need to pull your energy back. You're pushing, pushing, pushing. I do feel like maybe in the past you've worked really hard at things and you. No, I'm sorry, I meant to say the opposite. Maybe in the past you've gotten a lot of things easily. And people have judged you because of that and you feel like now there's a need for you to push. But they're showing that by being patient, by conserving your energy, um, things are gonna flow in. As they did when you were a child. I feel like things flowed to you as a child or youth and um. You didn't have to put so much effort, you just did the things you loved. They're saying go with the flow. At this time, if you feel good, if you feel like you're ascending above. Stagnant energy, allow yourself to do so and don't worry about coming down, okay? Feeling good is the key to your joy, alright? So let's see the message from your inner child and your future self. Your future self card is the card of energy and it's interesting, it's a dragon here. I love dragon energy. It says life force is flowing, open yourself to receive the power from within. So I do feel you are ascending this pile here. You are getting a boost. And I do feel a part of your life force is doing what you love to do, what feels good to you. This feels like a very creative group that has had a lot of disappointments when it comes to sharing their creativity and um. It's like that it was timing, I'm hearing. You had to be patient. You had to wait for the right people to be ready for what you're offering um. You're very powerful and people feel that, okay? But when your mindset is not supportive. It can put you in this energy of always feeling like you're waiting for something that's never coming in, okay? You have to trust. That you are enough is what I'm hearing. You're worthy. And your inner child says to play and that's interesting getting this Leo sign here. Is what I felt was like being happy and joyful. You feel like that gets ruined in some way, but. You're being encouraged to play and have fun and return to childlike ways and mindsets and carefree. Energy and many of you, I feel like with this four pentacles reverse is like, how the fuck I'm gonna be in this playful energy? I got to get my bread up, I got to get my money up and excuse my language, but. Your inner child needs it, needs a break from you standing here waiting for. This period of peace, this period of comfort and love and healing to come in. Your inner child is asking to have that fun now, to play now. To elevate out of, you know, any stagnant energy now. Coming home. It's like returning to who you are, returning to the things and that you love. And journey. So I had a bit moved to read from the book for many of the groups. Think I did for the last one. In this one, I wanna read you the message for coming home and journey. Very briefly, what stands out to me? So the first thing that popped up when I looked at coming home was as a child. Did you feel a connection to a loving motherly presence and how did you experience this and nurture it? Did you enjoy being in nature or being with animals? How did you sense the unspoken language of your divine mother? Tell your little one that inner child, our divine mother supports us and loves us always. We are held in her loving embrace. So there may be also mommy issues with this group here. Maybe you didn't get a lot of affection from your mother, maybe. You didn't get a lot of nurturing, you might have felt like you grew up really quickly, you did a lot of things independently on your own, um. And it's time for you to find that divine mother, universal mother energy. So let me go to the journey. Yeah, but there's a need to return to the universal mother to heal your sense of shame. To open up to her ever-present love, to feel unconditionally loved and not judged. And this you need to do on a spiritual level or you really need to um. Get that from a mother figure. And if that's the case, perhaps joining a spiritual group where there is a motherly head or um. A religion or a. Maybe just getting a spiritual mom. But that's for some of you, many of you, it's just coming back to that divine, universal mother. Within and around us in this universe, the love really of source energy. That feminine aspect of source that nurtures and cares and unconditionally loves you no matter what. And that's what you need to come home to. And release some guilt and some shame from past experiences. I feel like this power here you do hold on to some. Aspects of experiences, maybe things you did or things that happened to you in your past. Now with journey. This is about the journey that your inner child is on. Tending to your inner child is a hero's journey. If you hold these cards in your hands, you have heard the call and answered it. There are three phases in this journey, the departure, the the initiation and the return. During the initial phase, you prepare for the quest. In the second phase, you meet obstacles and overcome them. Then you finally return home, which you have here, coming home. Having integrated the lessons and insights of the journey, which I do feel you have done. But I do feel you may still feel aspects of yourself on this journey that you're still trying to. Come into grips with. So if you feel alone on this journey, this card is here to remind you that you are always held. You never walk alone and you never journey for yourself alone. Your impact extends to the generations before you and those that will follow. You are stepping into the rewarding and challenging path of mastery, acquiring deep wisdom along the way. Then I say I saw that coming by winter, you're gonna feel that. And before returning home, more whole than ever before. So wow, I do feel like you're you're on this journey with your inner child. To really heal the roots of those fears and. Come back to who you are, to who you truly are, which it feels like you're a very fun individual, playful, youthful energy. A light, like I'm seeing this light you bring, this color and light you bring to. Places and spaces where your energy. It's a lot with your energy this power. I keep saying energy, places and spaces where your energy is felt. Your energy is strong, very powerful, you can shift vibrations and spaces, my power force. And this is the end of your session. This was your reading. I hope it resonated. I hope this entire session. For connecting to your inner child and facing the fears that are holding you back has resonated with you. If it did, please give me a thumbs up. And if you're new to my channel, remember to subscribe and become a part of this light tribe. Read my description also tells you about all the other ways and platforms we can vibe on, how to book. A personal reading as well as the most important of them all, how to join me on Bonessa Journey to Guinea and into the new year. My upcoming retreat, December thirty of twenty twenty five to January twelfth, twenty twenty six. It's going to be life-changing. And it's going to really do a lot for healing. Energy, um, sending you so much light and love in your journey, power for. Peace, blessing on your journey, peace blessings and all the goodies that come from being a part of this family of light. I'll be back with power five, but until next time, power four. Bye, hey, power five. You were drawn to healing, which is a part of the final message from your future self. Funny, I actually consciously chose this pile by the top card. Or was it the other way around? I can't remember if I chose, yeah, I chose number four subconsciously without seeing the card. And then chose five after. So anyway, if you're here with me, what's up? Let's see the fortune. Now, this fortune. It's dark around the edges, like it was a little overcooked. Give me the energy that you've been waiting for whatever this fortune has to tell you. You might have been waiting for this for some time, um. Yeah, maybe you're at the point where you were thinking, this ain't coming in or it's not coming. What I need to hear, that was a little difficult to open without making a little mess. So it says your persistence will pay off. This has to be like part two to the power that had your resilience will bring surprises or whatever will face surprises, but anyway. I do feel like maybe you have been very persistent at something and feeling like it's not manifesting. That's your confirmation that it's gonna pay off, so don't feel like all your work and persistence was for nothing. And I think that's a fear of yours too. I think you've worked a lot at certain things and not seen the fruits of your labor. So there's a fear that you, it's like almost like you wanna give up on something you were persisting at. So what blessings are your fears causing to slow down from manifesting at this time? For my power fives, you have the high priestess. My psychic power, four of wands. It's like you can feel or you intuitively know something is gonna happen, but there's a fear, like a distrust in your intuition. Five of wands, oh, I see what that is. And the page of swords. You have competition around you, you have jealousy around you, you have people who don't. Wow, okay, so my fives, what I feel for you. What blessings wanna come in is you being totally in tune with your intuition, com- completely connected. I feel like the phases of the moon are important for this power as well to follow, but I really feel that. Your intuition, it's like your connection to spirit, to spirit realm, to the ancestors, to your guides. Whoever, whatever they may be, animal spirit guides even, is a blessing that. Wants to come in, but there is almost a fear. I don't know if you are afraid of your gifts, you're afraid when certain things show up that confirm your gifts. Um, or fear of judgment. Some of you feel like this may be a line of work for you and you fear the competition around people that are spiritual guides. Cause she has a Torah, so it's giving me the energy of a spiritual guide more so than just a reader. With the four of wands here. There is a blessed union, like marriage that brings stability, new home. Financial happiness is just like this blessing is what's coming in for you. This is what. Wants to come in, but there are fears of jealousy and competition. Also people talking, saying things behind your back, gossip. I feel like you're someone who, when you speak. Like what you have to say is very important. So you may be a poet, spoken word artist, I mean, an actor, a teacher. Um singer, uh, just a spiritual guide, intuitive guide, a speaker of some kind. Something that you have to talk a lawyer, um, where what you have to say, your truth is important, but I really see. Your fear is competition, your fear is the jealousy is of haters, of people talking behind you and trying to get in your way. And maybe this is something that you've dealt with a lot. So what's causing these fears at this time? Are you dealing with this currently? Have you dealt with it before? Um, it just seems like you want this connection to your spirit gods. You want this happy marriage, life, stability, home, whatever that represents for you, stability represents. But this fear of competition, of jealousy, of haters is what kinda slows you down from manifesting this stuff. So you have the death card. So what other things could, what other fears could be? I mean, sorry, what could be causing these fears now? We have the star card reversed. Oops, okay. That was right side up, but it wanted to flip itself over. Eight of swords reversed. And the high priestess twice, two different decks. You have the high priestess again. This power here, you are intuitive, you are a psychic, you might not have tapped in fully yet, but. It's a part of your calling. You might want to hit me up and join my intuitive guide. Uh, certification course because you have a calling. Or it's just meant for you to enhance upon it for yourself, not necessarily to separately to guide others. But um, you're able to see things before they manifest or feel energies. So what could be causing these fears now is not trusting your intuition. That's for one, um. Cause I do feel like you're freeing yourself from them. With the eight of swords reversed, you're starting to realize that some of these fears are. Um conditioned from your conditioned ex- selves experiences. And you're able to trust your intuition a little bit, but. With the death card here, there are huge changes that are taking place in your life right now. These changes are bringing fears that your wishes and hopes and dreams aren't gonna come in. I'm almost getting a feeling of all the praying, all the spiritual work I did was for nothing because I'm not seeing. Any shift, any change, but they're saying the change is happening, it it's happening. Like you don't even realize your persistence is paying off, um. You're starting to free yourself from this condition, thinking that you're stuck. Constantly having to deal with petty people, toxic people, jealous people, bickering, haters. And you're being intuitively guided, I feel, towards those that are more in alignment where you're headed now. But um, it's almost like you're one of those people that you want, you give up hope, but you don't really. It's like you feel hopeless, but you're not hopeless and I'm getting that sense from you. That it's like a part of you feels like I should just give up, but there's another aspect of you that feels like. Oh, these are, this is illusions, this is not real. I can free myself from this energy. I don't have to deal with these people or these places that make me feel this way. And I do feel fear of not being sure. Like of how you're being intuitively guided is is also a cause of these fears. Okay, so what could possibly be the root of these fears? Like they have to stem from somewhere. You have rings with the Zodiac sign of Gemini. Gives me the feeling that there's been commitments that have been made to you in the past, or you've witnessed people in commitments. Um, fail or get disappointed. Um, contracts, agreements, bonds, strong connections, unions, partner, counterpart, lovers, telepathy, like-minded people. Committed partner, engaged, interconnected soulmate. I think there's been many times you thought you felt, you you found your soulmate, you found your soul tribe. You found your like-minded group of people or lover or whatever friend. And only to find that maybe you were being used, maybe they were secretly jealous of you, things like that. And you shared a lot, I feel like with these people. Maybe you shared a lot of your personal business, you share uh wisdom and. I think there is a deeply rooted fear that. This can happen to you again, that there will always be people smiling in your face and all the time they wanna really take your place, backstabbers. Inventor, innovation, imagination, creative, gadgets, technology, groundbreaking, okay to fail. Do it again and again, inspired ideas, setting trends, mastermind. And that is something I think that's a fear of yours, that you are someone that's meant to bring forth new things. Things people have never seen before or take something that people have always done and do it in a new way with this Zodiac sign of Leo here. You are meant to um be creative. This is a creative power here. You guys are creatives. Creative thinkers, even if you're not creative artists. And there are things that you're gonna be trying, new ways of doing things that it might not work the first time off. And I think you've had those experiences now where things you invented or created or tried to put out there or manifest did not. Do what you wanted to do, but persistence will pay off. Do it again and again because you are meant to manifest. In uh set, like set trends, you're meant to manifest groundbreaking developments. So it's not gonna be correct the first time off, you're gonna have to try different ways. You're a mastermind though. So you are going to get inspired ideas as to how to do this and you have a deep rooted fear in failing. Or not having, I'm also hearing having your creative ideas stolen. Yeah. And lastly, curtain call. Yeah, there's some about you, you're meant to be a star, my power fives. Acclaim fame, recognition, parades, celebrity, is this, this is a part of your fear. Admiration, applause, show, appreciation, spotlight, focused attention, theater, act, performance, you are watching a movie. And it's the sign of Leo again. They are heavily saying your fears are around the things that bring you pleasure and joy. Wow. You're afraid of being successful. At connecting with the right people, getting the right contracts. Getting your things that you wanna put out there to manifest, getting the fame and recognition, these are all deeply rooted fears. I feel like they all stem from jealousy. You're afraid of attention, of recognition, of fame, of failing. Because there, you've always had haters waiting for you to fail, or you've always felt like there were people jealous of you or taking your ideas. Or you get into these contracts and these agreements and link up with people and share your wisdom and your knowledge and travel with them and do all these things. Only for them to either take your energy or your ideas or become jealous of you. I'm sorry about that because it's difficult when you have high priestess or a high priest energy. A lot of times you intimidate people. They feel like you can read their vibration, you could read their energy, you see through their bullshit. Only the real can be real friends with those who are connected to their intuition, to their spiritual team. But I feel like. There's a big change coming, like this is what's coming in for you, this stability, this happy marriage and home. And this deeper connection, maybe you're meant to be, you're meant to be doing work in this realm. But. You have deeply rooted fears, they stem from fame, recognition and attention and failing. And you have to realize that you never fail, that you're learning. And from those lessons you improve. You have to realize that contracts and bonds and agreements and connections that didn't work out just weren't meant for you. But maybe were meant for that moment, for you to learn something and maybe for them to gain something from you. And the times where you've had fame and recognition and applause and maybe you feel like you can't get to those levels again. Or there's a fear that if you do, you won't be able to maintain the expectations of those that. If you do, you won't be able to maintain the expectations of those that hold you in high esteem. But that's not true. Because people are already watching you like you're a movie, people are already looking at your life, following you, trying to do what you do. I s- I feel like this power, people try to. Mimic how you look, like if you have a friend and like say, for example, you got locks. You have a friend who never had locks or they had them a long time ago and they ain't had them in decades. And um y'all are hanging around each other and they mentioned to you, hey, I used to have locks. I remember when I had locks or your locks are nice. The next time you see them. They got locks or they're starting to grow locks. Yeah, that's a sign. That's a red flag that that person has a underlying. I don't want to say envy of you, but yeah, when someone desires to mimic somebody. There's aspects of them that they feel they have, that person has that they don't. And that can cause envy. Alright. So be careful, this power has a lot of possible envy, but it does feel like that's changing at this time. So don't give up hope. You're getting better agreements, contracts, stronger bonds, like-minded people are coming in at this time. And this time what you put out there is going to succeed. You're going to get the fame that you desire is what I'm hearing. So what is the message from your future self? Healing. Bless all in need of healing, hope and love. Spirit grant us strength and wisdom, guide us to the path of wellness. And I feel like your future self is telling you, go through a healing process. So that you too in turn can offer this healing to others. I feel that many of you are being guided at this time. To get onto the path of health and wellness and maybe as a career or just as a way of life. Would be beneficial to you and your loved ones. And your future self is telling you that healing is a huge part of your um. Your healing of your inner child's fears. Literally, you need to just heal them and return to that energy of hope. Okay? And your inner child also wants to say. Ancestors. Your ancestors are with you. My, my fives. If there is not a stronger, louder calling that you need to be in my intuitive guides course. I don't know what to tell you, or at least go into my free workshops playlist on YouTube. And go to the your ancestor speaks courses. There's something about you connecting more to your ancestors. Um, that's very healing for your inner child. Yeah, very healing for your inner child to revisit either where your ancestors are from, your origins. Or just to to remember the stories or learn the history. It will give you roots where you feel unrooted, where you feel unstable. You have embrace. I do feel your inner child needs some love. I'm getting an- another group like power four that. Was lacking in some kind of affection and loving, nurturing, mommy, mothering energy. And this could be from both parents. Um, and I have integration. Your inner child is saying it's ready to. Create wisdom from its experiences. It's time to integrate everything that you've gone through, everything up to this point. Into who you are and and where you're headed. So with if it with embrace. It's told about not being afraid of shame. Alright, this card invites you to embrace yourself with compassion and see the beauty and tenderness within you, just as respectfully as you witness the beauty. All around you. There is nothing to be ashamed of. Earth is your mother and she is here with you and for you always. So if you feel a disconnect from the earth. This card reminds you, you are perfect and lovable just as you are. Allow the air around your skin to embrace you, the earth to hold you, the waters to move through you and the inner fire to guide you. So there's a need to, and it's funny, it says maybe you were walking barefoot in the grass. When you used to feel connected to. The outside world. And today I literally walked outside to dump my garbage with no shoes on, through the wet, rained on grass. And it really felt good. It did feel like it recharged my energy. It felt really good. And I feel like for this power that would be healing for you at this time. The healing you need is to connect to the earth, put your feet in the earth's water, in the grass, put your hands in the soil, hug a tree. That is the healing you need at this time to reconnect to your surroundings, to the world. And say out loud to yourself and your inner child, it says, we are home, we belong here in our body. And I do feel that that is important, an important aspect of your healing, but um. With integration, I really feel like you, it's time to really just. Bring that aspect of yourself to the forefront, like. It's like accepting all of the parts of yourself. And the experiences you've gone through that made up who you are. And then integrating what is needed and letting go of what isn't. But also learning to embrace those isn't spots, you know? There's no need to be in a state of shame. Okay? And as I said with ancestors, you really, really, really are connected to them and your inner child. Needs to feel this connection. They need to feel this connection either to ancestors in this lifetime or ancestors in the past lifetime, whatever it is, you're connected to them. And you need to really uh. Work on that connection, strengthening it. Because it is a part of what connects you to the spirit realm. It's your ancestral connection. And that's what I got for you. Wow, that's your reading, my power fives. I hope this reading, in fact, I hope this entire session. For connecting to your inner child and facing those fears has assisted you in doing so. If it did, give me a thumbs up. If you're new to my channel, please remember to subscribe. We're always welcoming in new light workers into this light tribe. And everybody always remember to read the description. It tells you about all the other ways we can vibe, the other platforms I'm on. The days I'll be live, how you could book a personal reading and most important of all. How you can join me on Bonessa Journey to Guinea, West Africa and into the new year from December thirtieth twenty twenty five to January twelfth, twenty twenty six. It's going to be life-changing. I really, really highly recommend it and y'all don't see me recommending. Things. If I don't rec- if I recommend something, I'm I'm serious about it and I'm a part of going on and hosting um workshops during this trip. So I will be there and I'd love to meet you all. Go to the Suma, the sumascenter.com website's in the description. Remember to comment so I can vibe with you more. And share that maybe other light workers out there trying to find us. On that note, I'm sending you so much light and love on your journey, my power fives, peace, blessings. And all the goodies that come from being a part of this family of light. I love y'all so much. Thanks for supporting me. Until next time. Bye.